Start of our Bartlett Plan and Commission meeting. Would you all please stand, join us in prayer and a Pledge of Allegiance?
Do you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the beautiful day you've given us, Lord. I thank you that we live in a, in a country, in a state, in a city that allows us to meet and make decisions concerning our cities. I thank you for these that volunteer to give their time to make these decisions. Grant us wisdom, Lord, in all that we do, and I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call or roll, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Here.
Curtis Sigler.
Here.
David Hunt.
Here.
Jack Young.
Here.
Jim Lamb.
Here.
John Conroy.
Here.
Mandy Young.
Here.
Ken Demetrio.
Here.
Greg Easton.
Here.
All right, has anyone had a chance to look at the minutes? They're as they should be. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Seconded. It's removed and seconded. Call a vote, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young. Pass. Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
That carries. Minutes are approved. All right, our first item of business is a master plan application for the National City subdivision at 7543 Highway 70. Director Taylor?
Mr. David Bray with the Bray Firm representing the developer, Marty Matthews, is requesting master plan approval for a two-lot commercial subdivision. The property is located at 7543 Highway 70 and it is Zoned CL Neighborhood Business. This subdivision is being generated in order to create a legal lot of record for the commercial use and development. The property is .91 acres and it will be subdivided into two lots, with Lot 1 being 16,887 square feet and Lot 2 being 22,888 square feet. The applicant will later rejoin the two lots to create one buildable lot. Access to the property will be from two existing curb cuts on Highway, Highway 70. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions listed in the report. Thank you.
Any questions for Director Taylor? All right, seeing none. Will the applicant come forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North, Bartlett 30134. We're in agreement with the conditions presented by staff and as Director Taylor said, we, the plat would be recorded and then immediately rerecorded to combine this back to one lot.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? All right.
There are no questions or comments. I move we approve with recommendations from staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call a vote, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Item carries. Item number two is a construction plan application for that same National City subdivision. Director Taylor?
This request is in conjunction with the master plan application that you have just approved and that is also on tonight's agenda for the two-lot commercial subdivision, also known as the National City subdivision, to be located at 7543 Highway 70 and it is within the CL Neighborhood Business zoning district. Part of this construction plan request includes dedication and road improvements to Highway 70, which includes a 10-foot wide paving area along the front edge of the property on Highway 70, a center turn lane on Highway 70, a stormwater detention area, and approval from Memphis Public Works for a holding tank due to, if a sewer tap is not available on the property, it was the former fastener location, so there may be one still there. Staff has reviewed this request and recommend approval with conditions as stated in this report.
Thank you. Questions for the Director Taylor?
What do they plan on building, or do we know?
Excuse me?
What are they planning on building, or do we know?
I believe it's a flex building.
Okay.
Meaning we don't know exactly. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please?
Again, David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. To answer your question about what they plan on building, there's a couple of different things being discussed right now, including a retail center or possibly a restaurant. The restaurant could be probably a place of parking, so I'm not sure that would go forward, but the architect's working on that right now.
Other questions for the applicant? Are you in agreement with the conditions?
We are. I'm sorry. I meant to say that. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, nothing else. We'll call a vote.
Well, if there's, don't we have to make a motion? Or do we?
All right, sorry.
You want me to make a motion?
Go ahead.
If there's, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
All right, now let's try a vote.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
All right, that carries. Next item is a site plan application for the Christian Life Church expansion at 9375 Davis Plantation Road.
Mr. Roy Lamica with EFI Global representing the Christian Life Church is requesting planning commission approval of the revised site plan for a building addition on the church's property. The church is located at 9375 Davis Plantation Road and it is within the RE Residential Estate zoning district. On August 6, 2012, the church received a favorable recommendation from this commission for a special use permit to develop the property for a church use. Following the favorable recommendation from this board, the Board of Mayor and Aldermen later approved the special use permit. Included with the special use permit was a conceptual site plan, which included a sanctuary, gymnasium, softball field, two soccer fields, a playground, pavilion, maintenance shed, and a water retention area. This commission later approved the site plan for the existing 18,600-square-foot sanctuary and a 1,200-square-foot storage building. Back in December 2023, this commission reviewed a special use permit request for a school use on the property for the same building that is being presented tonight. We also received a traffic study late this past Friday afternoon and it's under review by staff. We are hoping to bring the special use permit with the traffic study back to you next month. However, for tonight's application, this is just for the proposed 17,403-square-foot building and a 2,753-square-foot playground without the school use. The building will include a gymnasium and classrooms. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Kim?
In the engineering conditions on page six, item five, the traffic study, we need to remove that item because that, just as you mentioned, that belongs in the SUP, not in the, not in this cement.
Can, can I ask a question here? So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, we're, we're looking at approving not the school, but the classrooms, the building.
Yes.
Everything that could be a school tonight, but not the school?
Exactly. Well, they're, they were gonna build the building regardless whether or not they get the school use, and most churches have classrooms even though they don't have a school. I mean, it could be used for Sunday school classes for different age groups, adult, you know, Bible study, that sort of thing. So, right now for tonight, the school use is not on the table. It's just for the normal church uses and the gym, with the gym.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. Thank you.
I've got a question here. What you read originally said that when they were, the application was originally made, it was submitted to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, and a school was included in that special use permit?
No, the, the same building was included as part of the conceptual site.
I think you read that including the school playground.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then I misspoke.
Okay. So that is not a part, the school at this point?
Right. It was the same building footprint.
I understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Taylor? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
Roy Lamica, 11213 Goat Drive, Ollentown, Tennessee. We have conditions and we have no problem with the conditions and they're agreeable, no problems at all. As Ms. Taylor said, we do have a school function, but it's not part of this. It is, this is just for the building addition, for additional classrooms, for Sunday school, for the gym, to have lunches. The kitchen is there as well, so it's just part of this, the church function, additional uses for the church, not for the actual school. That's not part of this consideration tonight.
Questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we get a motion, please?
Make a motion we approve with conditions of staff?
And I'll make a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call or roll.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
That carries. Next item is a site plan application for a new retail development at 7418 Highway 70.
Mr. David Bray with the Bray Firm is requesting planning commission approval of a site plan for a new four-tenant retail building. The new building will be located at 7418 Highway 70 and is, is within the CG General Business zoning district and it is the former location of the Siesta Motel. The property is 2.05 acres in size and the applicant proposes to construct a 6,000-square-foot building with a 32-space parking lot and with the dumpster enclosure located at the northwest corner of the parking lot. Each tenant space will be around 1,500 square feet. There will be a drive-through window install on the southernmost end cap unit. A 20-foot-wide streetscape will be located along Highway 70 in front of the property as well as two 20-foot-wide commercial to residential buffers, landscape buffers with the fence along the property lines. Also, this, this new site will include stormwater detention basin. The adjacent neighbors on the north side of this property, the Holmes family, came by today to discuss some of their concerns with the site, about the site plan, and I believe that is included in your packet, a list of items. One of their main concerns was the location of the dumpster. However, staff has also included a list of conditions. So, along with that, whether or not all of their items can be addressed tonight is between you all and the applicant. So, with that being said, we recommend conditions, I mean approval with the conditions listed in your staff report. We're not exactly sure how some of these items can be tweaked to meet their needs. I do know that one of their other concerns was noise and, you know, the, what hours the dumpster will be picked up and, you know, there's usually a, a banging from the dumpsters and we've gotten complaints before from residential neighbors adjacent to commercial buildings about that. They had concerns whether or not the noise ordinance would take care of that, and as you, most of you are aware, the noise ordinance does not allow any construction or other types of loud noises between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM in the morning. So, that would be enforced, of course. Relocating the dumpster, I'm not sure if that's a, if that is something that can happen on this lot. But we did include some conditions for the building to be shifted a little bit so that we could make the one-way road driveway that wraps around the building a little bit easier for vehicular movement and for safety reasons because you have that drive-through window on the opposite end, and we didn't want someone to come around the corner of the building and run right into the back of another vehicle. So, some of that might be able to be fixed with pavement markers as well, but I just wanted to point those items out to you. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions, please?
Yes.
One, has, the note that you gave us, has this, the, has this been given to David Bray, the Bray Firm?
Let me ask staff, has he received this yet?
To see if they can?
No. What, this just happened like today.
Okay.
Like, it wasn't like before the packet went out, no.
Okay, so they haven't had a chance to look over it or anything?
No, but we can definitely hand it over to them.
Okay. And two, I see that there's only one driveway, which, that was my concern, especially with the drive-through in there, and then seeing that the utility poles have to be moved and the fire hydrant, and there's a lot of work here.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is really a question for you or the Bray Firm, but...
Some of this for the Bray Firm, but there, this is an old site that's being reworked and there's an existing curb cut there already, and so they're trying to utilize what's there already and if you, you know, otherwise they'd have to work with T-DOT to get two curb cuts and that might be a bit difficult for them to achieve that and make the, you know, to have, you know.
They haven't said what's gonna go there. I assume fast food or something with the drive-through.
So, where the drive-through is, yes, there will be a restaurant, like a pickup restaurant there. Otherwise, all the other spaces are flex spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
In my concern with that, yes, you have the dumpster banging. It's temporary. It's less than a minute for that to happen, but what you just said, if there's a restaurant there, there's gonna be a, a speaker and so somebody can give them their order and it's gonna be one of these, you know, out of a, you know, a speaker, and that's gonna be very loud, and again, if we can't control the time, whether it's a Starbucks or Dunkin' Don't, well, I know it's not Dunkin' Donuts because we're getting one of those down the street, but whatever that is, I think that would be an issue more for the residential neighbors than a dumpster clanging. At least that would be my issue.
Yes. The speaker would be on the west where Sam is showing, so it would probably be closer to those other lots there than it would be for the neighbor that came in with the concern, but yes, you are correct.
Yeah, and there again, you've got three, you've got four houses right there that abuts that area.
How does one evaluate that situation, I wonder? I go through places like that too, but I don't notice it being an extreme amount of noise from placing orders and so forth. Could be, though. How do you evaluate it?
From my understanding, the restaurant isn't necessarily your typical fast food like a McDonald's. It's not gonna be that, but it is definitely a pickup window for orders, and who knows later on what that would be, so...
And I'm just saying, that lot, right there at that corner and that bend, I'm looking at it here on a vicinity map, has a swimming pool right there in their backyard. So then in summer, they're gonna be back there and they're gonna be listening to that all evening long, if they're out there trying to enjoy themselves in the backyard. Yeah, I'm...
This is hard to evaluate if we don't know what's going in there. I'm not sure how we vote on it.
Well...
Or have a concern.
Okay, it's gonna be a Little Caesar's.
Okay.
Pizza.
But, I mean, if it goes out of business next year or they decide not to open it, it could be anything.
Gotcha.
You know?
So, if I understand, help me understand what Little Caesar's does. I'm not a, a Little Caesar's fan, or I don't do Little, anyway.
Pizza.
Typically is.
Understand that, but they, they can't order it right there and then drive up and get it, can they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
They make it that fast.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They've got hot and ready.
I thought it took a few minutes to make a pizza.
They often do hot and ready unless you do a, you order a customizable pizza.
See, there, I learned something this evening, though.
But again, if they decide not to open it, it could be any...
No, I understand that.
Let's hope it's a donut shop then. There you go.
Yeah. Then they'll open at 3:00 in the morning, right?
The setback from that corner is only 20 feet, am I correct, in this southwest corner right there? Yes. Sam, right up there.
You have that plus the drop.
Right there.
You have that, that's the landscape screen, then you've got another 22, don't, what is it, 25-foot driveway? 22 to 25 to the...
From the building.
To where the potential speaker would be located.
Correct. Okay. But the curb on that side is actually at that point.
Yes.
20, 22 feet, something like that. Okay.
The property just east of, they've already started a privacy fence. Fence posts and all are already up and going.
Oh, and I'd also like to mention that the, the Holmes family requested, the typical landscape screen includes brick columns with a shadow box fence, and in lieu of that, they were requesting to keep the brick columns but with the eight-foot tall stockade. No?
Just eight foot?
Just eight foot? Yeah, stockade, right? Or, yeah. Privacy fence. Oh, just an eight-foot. Oh, I thought they didn't care one way.
Have they looked elsewhere in Bartlett to put this by chance?
Yeah, they're not sure.
There are so many.
I mean... It might be a question for Mr. Bray.
Yeah. Okay, I think I'll ask. Thanks.
All right, we got other questions for Director Taylor? All right, then, thank you. Let's have the applicant come forward.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. So yes, it is a Little Caesar's and we don't have a problem limiting the hours of operation to stop at 11:00 and make sure that there, that there's no deliveries or dumpster pickup after that, going through the conditions from, from the adjacent owners. And I also don't see any problem. I'll have to do a little bit of an angle to it, but we can move, we can move the dumpster and sort of center it so that it's in between the two properties. Don't wanna move it too far one direction because now I got mad neighbors on the other side, but we can move it to the center, and we're agreeable to, to switching out the, the standard six-foot fence with brick columns and making it an eight-foot fence instead.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, and you're agreeable to, I mean, moving utility poles and...
We're, we're evaluating that right now. That's, the owner's evaluating to see if it's, if it's cost-effective to, to continue with this site, but he's, he's looking at it and, and we had had an initial meeting with Bartlett, so he was aware that was a possibility.
Okay.
So for deliveries, you're gonna have something like a tractor-trailer coming in on any position there? What?
Not, we won't make a tractor-trailer in there. It would have to be a box truck or smaller. There's no way to get a tractor-trailer around that.
For Little Caesar's or anything like that, it's gonna be a box truck in there.
It would have to be a box truck.
And is it gonna deliver during work hours?
Well, we, we can condition it where, we don't have a problem conditioning that it would not be in the 11 to 7 hours, so yes, it would typically be during, during the
So now you've just hampered the other three tenants with a box truck in the parking lot, coming in and out.
Box truck can make it around the back of the building.
Yeah.
So...
And park and still have a drive-through on a one-way?
Depends on what time of day. If you've been to a Little Caesar's, they're not doing a lot of operation before noon. So they, they would probably take most of their deliveries in the morning as they're getting opened up and doing the prep work.
Yeah, but I guess that's my, if anybody were to come in there, say 10 o'clock, if one of these other businesses was open and someone drove around back to exit the, the lot, they'd pretty much be stuck into that truck.
Well, if you've got, if you've got a box truck parked parallel to the back of the building, that's 25-foot wide drive.
So you've got enough room?
There's enough for them to, to go around.
Okay. All right.
I got a question for somebody out of this floor.
Go ahead.
Has the zoning on that parcel changed recently?
No.
Been like that all along?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Question over here.
He got it.
All right.
Like if there's a situation with a box truck blocking somebody, that landlord's gotta fix that.
Yeah.
Not us.
Correct.
Plus, fire, if there was a fire to the back, isn't it a little difficult to get a fire truck back there?
They, they can make those radiuses. We've, we've got enough room per...
Other questions for the applicant?
Has that been confirmed with the fire chief? I mean, I know he's back there in the back.
It's, it'll typically be part of the review, so he'll, he'll put comments on there if he needs to be wide.
I, I understand.
Get smaller trucks, right?
Yes. Most of the time in these small developments, we're not typically going to try to get a fire truck on the property. What's the depth of the building?
I can't read that from here.
Well, it's only 6,000 square feet, so most...
I'm gonna say it's 60 feet.
Yeah. Most of the time, if the building's 60 to 80 feet deep, we're not going around behind it anyway because we're gonna park the fire truck away from the building, so if we get on the property, on the front of the property, we're using, we're using good with that. But 25 feet wide is typically the turn radius is, is, is enough for us to be able to get a truck around if we needed to.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's not more than 80 feet deep?
Other questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, one more.
Sure.
It is a non-sprinkled building, is that correct?
I don't do building plans, but it's 6,000 square feet. I think we're required to be sprinkled, aren't we?
Above.
Do I?
Above.
Above five, so it's, who we would have to be?
10.
Oh, is it 10?
10.
Okay. So I, I don't know. That, that would be a question at DRC when they come forward with building plans. I honestly don't know.
Other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve with conditions of staff. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call the vote.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
No.
Curtis Sigler?
No.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Item carries. Last item on the agenda is a site plan application for a flex space on Summer Avenue North of Elmore Road.
Ms. Vanessa Ballard with V. Ballard Consulting is requesting planning commission approval of a site plan for a commercial flex space development. The property is located on a vacant lot at the corner of Summer Avenue and Alteria Road, and it is Zone CH Highway Business Zoning District. The proposed site plan includes five flec, flex, well, flex space buildings on 2.75 acres of land with an 87-space parking lot and two detention pond areas. The site will incorporate pervious pavers. Due to the site being slightly overbuilt, uh, the ordinance requires 35% green open space, and they are requesting 33.3% green open space, which would typically have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval. However, the applicant is proposing to add 4.8% more green space with pervious pavers within the driveway aisles, and you can see those on your site plan. Staff has reviewed this application and believe that the, the site plan could possibly be reworked to remove some of the conditions listed in your staff report, as well as adjust the sheet number three, where there's a breakdown of uses that they are proposing for the property, and maybe they could possibly write a letter to explain exactly what uses they do want on the property, because some of the uses that were listed were like manufacturing, um, and, uh, light manufacturing is not permitted in this zoning district, and the type of light manufacturing that they described in meetings was something like Etsy shops, like, um, a small storefront from Etsy sellers with storage in the back. And then, um, before this meeting, the applicant came by the office and said that, you know, they were willing to work with us on their uses and possibly make them offices with storage. So I think that we need to nail down exactly what we're talking about here in writing from the applicant, and that, um, the uses listed on sheet number three need to be adjusted, uh, along with the parking. Um, this board, at, at, from time to time, has been able to approve, uh, parking lots, uh, where there's like a small amount of, uh, parking that doesn't meet the requirements, like two to three spaces. Other than that, they've had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, another item was the dumpster location. We're not exactly sure, but it appears that the dumpster is located within the residential landscape buffer along that rear property line, so if it is within that buffer, then it needs to be removed from the buffer. Uh, with that being said, instead of recommending denial, that's what we, we recommended at first, we recommend that this project be continued until these issues can be adjusted within the site plan application. Thank you.
Questions for the director? Sounds like a good idea. Any other questions? All right, would the applicant come forward, please?
Hi, guys.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Amit Friedman. Oops. 96 Lafayette, New York, and we have Oksana.
Oksana Pevan, uh, and I'm a local real estate professional as, as well as partial owner.
And, uh, we have, uh, Vanessa as well joining us from a little bit far away.
She's the planner, so...
Okay. Um, so I'm not really sure if anybody knows, um, I do, uh, I own developer, uh, developing company that does, uh, flex space, uh, throughout different states. Uh, I think it's about five years ago, we realized that, uh, flex space is the most sought-after, uh, I wanna say, um, space for business owners. It's the most convenient, uh, for them, uh, for many, many reasons, and, uh, basically flex space is a small space, 1,000 to 2,000 square feet, that has a small office and more space for inventory. Uh, as today e-commerce market grows, people looking for a place to have their small office, and then also put all of their stuff somewhere. Um, and that can go into service companies that have any type of services, like a garage door or, um, locksmith, you know, anybody that wants to store some of their inventory somewhere and also get a phone call and do their job from somewhere. So a lot of different businesses can use this, um, to operate their business. We think that this project will bring tons of, uh, business opportunities to the city, and, uh, that's why we wanna build it, and, uh... Yeah, absolutely, a lot of jobs as well. Um, I will take any questions about the project and Oksana as well, so please.
What's your reaction to Director Taylor's comment that you've got a list of uses that don't appear to be compatible with the site?
Uh, is there a specific one that I can, uh, address? Because most of the things here, like, uh, e-commerce, uh, that's perfect for them, like maybe a small cross-vigging can be perfect for them as well. Uh, manufacturing, no, I don't see any manufacturing. Um, okay, so as far as, um, manufacturing, we don't need to have any manufacturing, so that can be deleted. As far as e-commerce, let me address that, explain what, uh, what do I mean? So I own, uh, an e-commerce business for the past 20 years. I own a factory in China. We manufacture toys, and we have a small space where we have our office. We have some inventory. I sell on Amazon, so I get, let's just say, I don't know, 20 orders a day. I need me to go home and grab whatever I have to grab, put in a box, put the label on it. A small van will come at the end of the day at 5 o'clock, grab whatever I have to grab, and then it's going to ship it wherever I'm going to ship it. So e-commerce are the main people that will take this space. They need 1,000, 2,000 square feet. Again, it's a small business. They can sell whatever. They can sell these mics, they can sell a watch, they can sell a iPhone cases. They need small storage spaces. I can show you a big picture of one of our tenants, um, here, with something like this. We should have, I think that's somewhere on the board as well. So, you can get it? So it's, 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 it's pretty, we can, yeah, but it's pretty self...
That looks a lot like a warehouse to me.
Um, this guy that sits over here has a small, like about 25% in his office, and then his inventory will be over here.
What kind of inventory does an office need that's 75% of its space?
Um, again, if you have e-commerce space, anything that you buy online today, it needs to be stored somewhere, and that needs to be packed and then shipped, so that's kind of inventory.
Okay.
Cell phone case, um, t-shirts, hats, anything at all.
Okay.
Shipping and receiving, yeah.
Truly, most of the, um, most of the business owners, especially during COVID, have done the same thing out of their homes, and they are looking for spaces like this where they don't have to do it from their home and the garage. So that's the type of e-commerce stores we're talking about, and we would like to clarify that, that it is not manufacturing. No.
Have you matched what you wanna do with our existing codes in Bartlett? Have you, have you matched what you wanna do with the existing codes along with the director's comment, so that you're very clear and you have a presentation that makes sense to us? I'm lost right now. I don't know that you even qualify for, to be honest with you.
Okay, um...
You have a concept. I, I hear your concept. I don't know that it matches what we're, what our codes represent.
I think that it's, uh, I think it's on point with, uh, okay.
So that, the use that he is describing is what we would have in IP in the industrial park. That's where we have all the type of resources. The CH zoning is mainly for retail, restaurants, that sort of thing. And so, um, if they were all retail shops, where someone could walk in and purchase, that's, that would fit, but you gotta make sure the parking, the number of parking fits, and if it doesn't, and if it's just a third block, then both the boards aren't built and request a, um, variant with a parking requirement. So what you're describing, shipping and receiving, distribution, um, small storefront, just, uh, office with all of the storage you're describing and industrial parking, that's the way our code is written.
I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation that we do it, uh, we continue this until it gets a little more clear. I mean, it's very clear to me that you're not clear on what we require. We've already said you're not, you can't have a warehouse here. The brochure you gave us says warehouse very clearly, so it's, I'd, I'd like to move that this be continued until they can work out the differences in what's gonna take place in those, in that site.
Well, I have a question before we proceed.
Well, I think we, we need to get, since there's a motion on the floor, we probably need to get a second or something before we go into questions.
Is there a second for the motion? Just a minute, just a minute. Is there a second for the motion?
Okay, now you can.
So now I can ask my question?
Yeah.
Okay. So on this...
You can.
One, two, third page. I mean, I understand what flex space is, okay? I get what you're saying, but you have listed potential tenants and contractors, okay?
Yes.
All right, you see that page, uh, sir?
Yes.
You have gone anywhere from e-commerce to a gym, to event planners, to candle makers. You have crossed everything, so what you're telling us is that you're just here to build a building, and you don't know what's gonna go in there, and it could be anywhere from Suzie Homemaker to you coming in and storing all your inventory in there. And what we're saying to you is this list right here is all over the place, and it's not zoned for that, okay? Does, does that make sense to you?
Makes sense.
Okay, so what we would like and what we're saying to you is to look at this list that you have that's all over from A to Z, narrow it down, come back to us, because it's not zoned for warehousing, make sure you have your parking straight for what it's zoned for, and then kind of limit your list down to what you want a little bit better, and then present it to us. I mean, I think it's great. You did a great presentation. We, we just, it's just all over.
Completely understand, but I think there was also approval for, uh, storage.
All right, excuse me, excuse me. We got any other discussion or questions before we call a motion? Call the vote, please.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, what you need to do is get with the planning department, sort out all the questions that have been raised here tonight, and come back to us when you guys are in, matched up what can go on that property.
Okay, guys, 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much.
Can we get anybody lined up?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have election of officers also. I got ahead of myself.
All right, we need then to elect new officers for the planning commission, and we need some nominations for chair and vice chair.
So typically, uh, the chair and vice chair, they serve two-year terms, uh, and then we cycle out after that. Uh, this would be the first year of, uh, John Conroy as chairman and Curtis Sigle, Sigler as vice chairman.
Yeah, that was a good try. All right, we still need nominations, I guess. Do we not?
I would nominate, can I do that?
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Well, I think we have a second, and we'll just vote on it.
No, whoa, whoa, whoa.
No.
You, you, are you two gentlemen, you're, you're on for the vote, right?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay, okay. Just want to be sure I'm clear.
All right.
Second?
Call the vote.
So you're, you're motioning to continue with John and...
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
No, yes.
John Conroy?
Yeah, 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 yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
I guess that settles that part of it, so...
Now it's official.
Now it's official. We get anything else?
Uh, yes, we do have two open discussion forms that were submitted.
Okay.
Right, um, so one is from Eric Gott, and one is from Amber Gott. Um, their address is 3666 Ellen Davies Cove.
Okay.
Um, so they'll each get, they'll get three minutes each to say what they'd like to say.
All right, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Eric Gott, 3666 Ellen Davies Cove. Um, I just wanted to quickly address, in your packets, you had a letter from the Homers Association, uh, that was encouraging the church to expand and to build. Um, thoughts and feelings have changed in the neighborhood since that time. We sent out a survey to our neighbors, and our neighbors, approximately 85% of them, uh, were not in favor of the church expanding and starting a school.
Okay, thank you.
You say they're not in favor of them expanding?
And starting a school.
Oh, a school, okay. Well, so far, we're not approving a school.
Right. I just wanted to clarify, that letter that was in your packet, that's, uh, from 2012, is not the case in this day and age. I could supply you with a new letter with updated information if you like.
All right, and so the, the association is opposed to the school?
The neighbors voted.
Yeah, okay.
85% of them not in favor of a school and expansion in this.
All right. Were there any particular reasons?
Uh, yes. There's lots of reasons, traffic being the primary concern, and the change in the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, do we have another speaker? That's it?
Yeah.
All right, then we stand adjourned.